Hi, it's 7:01, called and regularly scheduled the Board of Selectment meeting to order. And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if we all could stand beside the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any additions or changes to the agenda? Andy, I didn't see any. Okay, so Section 4 will move to public comment. Section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the board. Board requests that comments be limited to three minutes or less. Persons wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box, and you will be recognized. Donna, any public comments?
There's nothing at this time.
Okay, so we'll move to Section, next Section 5 of the agenda, which is good to know special recognition. I will turn that over to Mr. Tierney.
Thank you, Peter. I do not have anybody for this section of the agenda for this meeting.
Appointments and resignations?
Yes.
Green Committee resignation and tree warden appointments, so Andy?
Yes, thank you again, Peter. The Green Committee resignation, Natasha's letter of resignation from Linda Contenaro Howard from the Hebron Green Committee, and there's a proposed motion.
Tiffany, would you be so kind as to read the motion for us, please?
Certainly. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the resignation of Lydia Conteno Howard from the Hebron Green Committee, effective immediately with regret, and thanks for her service to the town of Hebron.
Motion read, any comments, any discussion? Okay, so any, together or individually? Or done? Will individually vote on it?
Yes, yeah, individually.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with no additional discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed nay, or any abstentions, please note that. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And Peter Casper, aye. Thank you. We'll move to the tree warden appointment. Tiffany, do you want to continue?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andy.
Just a little point of information. So due to the retirement of Kevin Kelly, the previous Public Works Director, he also served as the Hebron's tree warden. We recently hired Paul Forrest as our new Public Works Director, and he is certified, so it's only fitting, and I hope the board will confirm his appointment as Hebron's tree warden tonight.
Thank you. Andy, Tiffany, if you may?
Sure. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen in accordance with CGS Section 23-58, appoint Paul Forrest, Public Works Director, as the tree warden for the town of Hebron, effective immediately.
Tiffany, Mark, any discussion? Okay, we'll move forward with the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, opposed nay, or any abstentions, please note those. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And Peter Casper, aye. So motion carries, thank you. Sorry, Donna, if you could move up, please, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at my screen. You have the next section of the agenda. Oh, sorry, okay. So, Section 7, Town Manager's Report. Mr. Tierney?
Thank you, Peter. We had a visit from Lieutenant Governor and the Commissioner of Foreign, BFW, and that was held at the Lions Fairgrounds on Wednesday. They honored the veterans from the Korean era and also Vietnam. It was about 100 people in attendance, it went very well, and it was a very touching ceremony. Myself and Dan Larson attended that for the town. We are working with the Maple Fest Committee. It looks like our EDC is going to start preparing to take that over and make some changes to that. It'll be more run by Hebron people and the people that have the two existing sugar houses. So the flower girl also throwing her hat into the ring to assist with that group. So we're going to continue to rebuild that and try to make that better this year. We are busy collecting taxes in our office every day. It seems so far to be going pretty well, keeping the girls busy downstairs. I'm happy to report that the library roof should be finished. Hopefully, they're going to start taking the fence down around the building as soon as tomorrow, if they're still on track with that, depending on the rain. The pump stations, we're down to the final punch list to get those things wrapped up. That was a long project that's finally coming to fruition. So it's another good project coming off our plate. And then last but not least, the Wall Street sidewalks are back out to bit again. And we had another meeting with Shippo to discuss the area that we are trying to protect, to see if there's a little bit more leeway where we can possibly lower the cost of the sidewalk with the wall that DMT is requesting we install. So we continue to meet with them. We had blueprints and plans going back and forth as latest today, this afternoon. So we'll keep you posted on that as well. And that's all I had for the Town Managers' Report.
Thank you, Andy. All right, I need to see section eight. Did you move up the agenda, please, I didn't turn it up? Okay, so the American Rescue Plan State Local Recovery Funds approval. Andy, do you want to take this as a as an introduction?
Sure, I can, so.
Aye, or I thought you wanted to add some context to you?
Yes, what we did is we had a workshop, as you will know, on the 28th. We introduced some new proposals and some updated cost estimates for some of the projects that have been approved. Selectmen held a workshop and discussed several previous approved projects. Adjustments of the three projects were discussed. So additional funding for the Firehouse Company, one. Construction is $33,000. There's a removal of trail repair funding for $12,000. And there's also a proposal to increase to pickleball court funding, $20,000 for two courts, which is supposed to be located by the Hebron Elementary School, or $53,000 for three courts. Confirmation has been received from the Hebron Board of Education that $75,900 for the gym floor, as per the quote, is adequate for the repairs and the refinishing. And we got a new request for funding from the Fire Marshal's Office. They're looking to upgrade some radios, so they made the request. We added it to the list. We're still waiting, I think, on attorney's approval if this is something that's fitting for the criteria. And then attached is the updated spreadsheet. The Selectmen wish to continue discussions, finalize recommendations on the above listed projects, and address remaining requests for ARPA funds.
See, I'll turn to Tiffany and Mark, but my bias being down to three is it can, unless there's some matter urgency that we take this under advisement and look to further discuss it further when we have at least four of us to do so. There's a lot of substance here and a lot of opinions, and I just assume table it to continue another meeting, unless either one of you disagrees. Tiffany?
No, I don't disagree. I think the only point I want to make is I'm not sure it's really fiscally prudent to consider a ton of new additions at this point. I personally feel it's a little late in the game to submit requests because we're nearly through all that we got through ARPA. So that's the only point that I'd like to be on the record as making. But I think it would be better to have more robust discussion with more members present. Thank you.
Mark? Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Tiffany. I'm glad to see that we could fix the Hebron Elementary School gym floor for $70,000 something. If it was, if it was a bigger request and for the radios for the fire marshal, I think in the fire marshal retiring, that he should have put the request in for the radio before, and now we're going to be stuck with taking that out of the regular budget, and those are imperative things for public safety and life. So although I do agree with you, Tiffany, I'd like to see that $5,000 considered to get the appropriate communication and radios for the fire department, nothing else, though. It's just my opinion.
I mean, as I think about this and listen to you guys talk, I think, Tiffany, you're right in that adding more, unless it's related to a particular item or an update associated with an item that we've already discussed, I think really at this juncture, we ought to say this, you know, we really need to focus on what we have and not add any more in terms of research and distraction and all that. And again, as you said, it's been ongoing for quite some time. So I think it sounds like the three of us would agree that unless it's related to a current item or it's an update to a current item, or somehow we can make a correlation to a current item or department or something, we really shouldn't take on any new requests, at least at this juncture. So I would, I would recommend, I mean, can we do that, Andy, in terms of take a pause on this? Is that, it seems like that's the direction of the board here. We really don't want to make this more complicated than it already is. And I have no issue putting a pause on it at this juncture. Do we need to do that, Andy, or should?
Yeah, absolutely, that you can, that's probably, I agree with all of you. That's, like I said, we're just the conduit. They put the request in, we gave it to you, but I think your action and Tiffany's comments are appropriate.
All right, so at this point, the board agrees that we'll take no further requests for ARPA funds unless there's an exception that's approved by us and the town associated with an existing item. Already, just to just to be reasonable about that. Do we need a motion, Andy, or that's just a, that's just a request and we keep moving?
No, I don't think you need a motion. You can just give me the guidance to just let people know.
That's it. Let's do that. No further additions at this juncture. Thank you. So the next agenda item, item 8B. Andy, if you want to take this, I'm happy to provide an update totally up to you.
Sure, I'll just read the thing for the captive audience. Item 8B is the Public Works Building Project Survey Committee update. The deadline for the submission of the survey was Saturday, July 15th, 2023, and the results are currently being compiled by the consultant. We hope to present the report at the August 3rd, 2023 regular meeting. And then, Peter, you can go a little bit further from that email we received.
Okay, great. So what we'll do is we're going to call for a committee meeting next week to go through the details of the survey, the results, and then in conjunction with Andy and the town, we'll compile some information and then break back to the Board of Selectmen. I'll work with Andy on that as well. And we don't have a date for the meeting, but I'm hoping to be there next week. And just a quick synopsis of where we landed. 880 people started the survey, 725 completed it. We have 717 comments, and 800, excuse me, 183 people have indicated they want some form of follow-up or they put their names down, you know, to try to make a connection to gather some more information. So I would say overall, some good engagement. Based on the consultant's recommendation, we will have statistical credibility to sort of make some decisions as a board on the information. So we'll have enough information to react to. I looked at some, there's a lot of comments, which is, which is really good. Shows real good engagement. And again, rather than sort of touch on a couple of, or any of them at this juncture, we really need to do meet, meet and have the consultant go through his synopsis to make sure we are sort of commenting with the appropriate perspective. So again, that will be beginning of the week and on target for the August 3rd. So I think overall, a really good exercise from one MC, and I look forward to representing the committee with an update at the next meeting, obviously in conjunction with Andy and the town as well. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tierney?
Thank you. Next up, 9A is a request for a bid waiver for the Hebron Elementary School gym floors. The Board of Selectmen has previously approved ARPA funding for the repair of two gym floors at the Hebron Elementary School for a total of $75,900. The billing committee recently met on the site with Craig Bryant and the Board of Representatives, and with the contractor being K Floors, who provided a quote which is attached. The consensus is the work can be completed for the quoted amount and will address all concerns. A bid waiver is requested so that the project can move forward in a timely manner, and work can be completed this year, and to avoid cost escalation if the work is deferred until next year, which would be necessary if bidding is involved. A copy of the purchasing policy is attached, and then there is a proposed motion, if you're so inclined to award this.
But again, we'll read the motion, then we'll open it for discussion. Mark, if you can read that, I will pick on you to read the motion.
Sure. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen pursuant Hebron Purchasing Policy, waiver of competitive bid, approach of bid waiver, and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to enter into a contract with B&amp;K Floors of Hartford, Connecticut in the amount of $75,900 for the repair and refinish of two gym floors at Hebron Elementary School.
The motion read, discussion. I know, Tiffany, you had some good comments and thoughts as we sort of work through this process. Is there anything you'd like to add from a perspective and discussion associated with this?
No, I think, you know, I think if the work can be done and address all the concerns that were raised at the workshop when we discussed this, then I'm comfortable proceeding. Thank you.
Mark? You good?
Yeah, I'm comfortable, yeah, I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, and I think, I think it makes sense, and I think normally we want to follow the bid process, but in this case, a bid waiver seems to be appropriate, considering the detail that was outlined and the timeliness, and obviously keeping the cost where it is and the comfort level of the, of all the parties associated with it. So that would, I just want to recognize that I think it's, the bid waiver in this case seems to be in alignment with some good comments as we move forward. So that's my comment. So with the board's comments, we'll move forward to a vote. All those in favor, aye, opposed nay, and please note if you wish to abstain. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Tierney?
Okay, I didn't have that purchase of policy clipped together, so I had to weed through some pages there, I believe.
Andy approves resident state trooper contract.
Yeah, we added that, so I think it's a two-year contract. Donna, we sent that out to the Selectment to review, right? I don't know if you can hear me, but you guys got that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so it's a two-year contract. It's a formality that we renew this. We still continue to carry or move forward with a Connecticut resident trooper for a lot of reasons. We don't have a jail, for one, and two, any major incidents, they take over and they take over all the liability. So precise town that we are and the town right next town over from the Colchester barracks, it makes sense. So I would hope that the board tonight would approve me signing that contract.
Hey, Mark, since you're my friend in emergency services, would you be so kind as to read the motion?
Okay. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the contract between the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of State Police and the town of Hebron for a contract period from July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2025, for the services of one resident state police trooper and authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to sign the agreement.
Motion's been read. Any discussion? Tiffany? Okay, Mark, any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay, I have nothing to add. So based on the motion being read, although we'll take a vote. All those in favor, aye, opposed, please signify by saying nay, or note your decision to abstain. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
The next item is the draft agenda for the Board of Selectmen's August 3rd meeting.
Thank you. Sorry. Unlike you, printed everything out, Andy, on what I'm seeing on the screen. Okay, so the consent agenda. Items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and maybe vote on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item may do so, sorry. Can you go back to that? I just want to finish reading that, sorry. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. Thank you. We have the approval of minutes, July 20th, sorry, July 20, 2023. Okay, I didn't know, did someone have something? I heard some. Okay, so
I think, I think Dan Larson might have just signed on. Dan, are you there?
Yes, I am. I apologize, yeah.
So Dan is here now, I'm gonna.
Oh, great. Thank you for that. So Dan, we're on the consent agenda. And our proposed motion, I will read. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen amend the approval of the May 18th, 2023 regular meeting minutes to correct the motion to read as follows. Motion by Pete Casper that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approves ratifying the bargaining agreement with AFSC and E Supervisors Union for a period July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. This action carried forward to subsequent minutes approval. The motion passed unanimously. Any discussion on that item?
Got them, enough for me.
Okay. All right, so based on that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, aye, opposed, please signify by saying nay, and please note any abstentions. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Larson?
Dan Larson, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passes. Okay. And I'll just continue the proposed motion, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. So we have the approval of minutes, June 15th, 2023, June 29th, 2023, and then we have four, there's no more, I think, four approval of tax refunds noted. Is there any discussion, any issues associated with any items that we need to pull out or discuss separately? Dan?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, so you're, so we're good voting in, in, during time. I didn't know if there was anything that you wanted to pull out for the minute. Okay, Tiffany, Mark, anything there? Okay, so based on that, we'll move forward with a vote. All those in favor, aye, opposed, nay, and any abstentions, please note that as well. Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealie, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And Peter Casper, aye. Motion passes, thank you. Roll down the agenda for me, please, I'd appreciate it. Okay, so the next item is item number 11, which is Liaison Reports. Tiffany?
Sure, I have one quick item from Open Space. So the town website now has the link entitled New Airline Trail Website and Maps, which is on the homepage. So what that will do is it will send those interested to the 12-Town Airline Trail Master Plan, and then each town is featured, you know, that's on the trail, including Hebron, with further links to the town's highlights. So this master plan was funded by a state grant, and a special thank you to Advocacy Committee Appointee Anne Zikis as she led the effort to aggregate Hebron's highlights and Hebron's map production. So a nice thing for townspeople to check out on site. Thank you.
Mark?
I didn't get to comment about this at the last meeting because we had run so late, but our first active shooter training was very successful. We ran it at Ram High School. We're doing a lot of conjunction with Marlboro because Marlboro is going forward with having a school resource officer, and he was there. He's a retired Hartford officer. We're really working well together, coordinating all our movements and responses. And in two weeks, we're also having a big training with the state police at Wyndham Tech. So we're all on board and using the same tactics and techniques and have the experience of working together and knowing each other. We still have a long way to go. We're way behind other states. I'm actually in Florida right now, and I was doing some researching because my brother-in-law is a principal down here, and he was actually at an active shooter when he was younger. They train once a month, and their schools also have exercises once a month. So we're kind of falling behind in that, and I'm still going to try to be a proponent of keeping up with the best practices. And I thank you guys for supporting all our active shooter efforts with ARPA funds. And the fire chief is bringing over a practice door because in the past, police officers haven't been able to gain entrance into active shooter events. So we actually have a door to practice on how to breach it, how to get in, and make decisions about how we're going to save kids when we're outside the door and we're going to get in there. So I'm kind of really excited about this. This is one of the last things I really want to accomplish in my police career at Hebron. So I just wanted to let you guys know how that's going. The public was really receptive of that. Michelle, the flower girl donated things. Ted's always donates things. Gina Marie's, they feed us. I don't even ask them, they call up, we know you're having a training, can we help to feed you guys? It's just such a great community spirit, and I wanted to note that the support of the community, and there's nothing better when you come together for a worthy common cause. So thanks, guys, for letting me, letting me speak my piece there, and I'm done.
Mark? Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
I was wondering, would it be worth it for us to try to send a letter, maybe to like Home Depot, Lowe's, and the other building supply companies, to find out if they get any damaged doors in frame that they would donate for that, for that forceful entry portion of the drill?
That's, that's not a bad idea, Dan, and eventually we got to get a couple of junked cars to work with, too. So thanks for giving me that idea. I'll work on that.
Okay, and for junk cars, the fire department, we used to get them all the time. So it's not, there should not be an issue getting vehicles from the local scrapyard.
Okay, thanks. I think I talked with Chief Starkell about that, and he said when we're ready, he'll, he'd probably be able to procure one for us, just like you said.
Yeah, that, yeah, as I say, the fire department, you know, we get them all the time for, you know, yeah, you know, rescue, vehicle rescue training. So, okay, perfect.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Dan, updates Liaison? Liaison?
Well, probably the big thing is Code is actually, and this would be with the Peters House, Code is actually going to be having, I guess, their monthly meeting, I want to say the first Monday in August, and they're going to be hosting it at the Peters House. And, you know, sadly, their event because of the weather or sadly, a lack of weather got canceled the whole Hebron day. You know, and then the sun came out, which was pretty sad. But there was that, and then the only other thing I have, and it was a nice event Andy and I went to the other day, honoring the Vietnam War veterans and the Korean War veterans. I guess both of those were undeclared wars, and so they're finally getting their just recognition. so they're finally getting their just recognition. So that was a, a great event to attend. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Andy? Any updates from you? Not muted, Andy, I'm sorry.
I pretty much gave my reports earlier in the week and then just now, so thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And uh, in terms of from my perspective, Board of Finance is actually meeting now. Um, so if there's anything uh, important coming from that, I'll be able to provide that at our next meeting in terms of an update. So I'll have to be updated after, uh, obviously I've been missing that meeting. And practicing recommission, the only update really which really coordinates uh, with the ARPA discussion is that uh, correlates the, excuse me, the ARPA discussion is that there is a, Craig's been working to um, but then continue to identify potential sites for the Dog Park, uh, so we can continue that discussion. And he has a uh, a meeting uh, with the committee next Friday to look at a couple of the sites that we have been talking about. So hopefully in the, in the coming weeks, we'll have a little bit more information to share on that, so we can discuss it as a board. Um, so that's moving forward, at least with the information gathering uh, on that item on the ARPA list. So that's all I have. So with that, um, uh, section twelve would be a closing section on public comment. Um, I don't see anything in the chat, Donna. Is there anyone that's identified uh, themselves as, as interested in providing a public comment?
Aye. Oh, here's one. We have Terry McManus.
McManus, the floor is yours.
How can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Terry McManus, one six nine North Street, Hebron. Uh, just to preface, um, if I address someone in an improper manner, I'm the wrong name or the wrong title. Uh, if you're offended somehow and how I might address you, please let me know and I'll correct that. Otherwise, I'll assume that basically we're all friends here, acquaintances, and have a great deal of respect for everyone that's here. Having said that, um, it's been a while since um, I've been intensely, intensely going to a number of meetings, about eighteen months now. And the reason was is I thought I was missing something. I was missing how to give input uh, as a citizen and with a so intent to have my ducks in a row when the final uh, vote came for this past budget. I did learn an awful lot about different budgeting problems and techniques, but I was talking to someone at one point and said that, no, I really haven't changed my opinion as, as where and how we need to go forward and how I might be able to add value. And, but I was scratching my head as to the best way to do that. I had research running for Board of Selectmen, um, that is not going to work out. That's all right. But one thing that I did realize and the River East usually does not talk about public input. I think I can remember of the many, many meetings that I've been to that one person was during public comment, their topic was brought up in the River East. And so along though, I, I noted that whatever input that I give to you as individuals in these meetings, basically that's as far as it would go. One of the neat things since um, as far, I mean, it wouldn't go to the River East. One of the neat things with the Zoom is that we've been able to record those and actually comments, public comments have been showing up more in the written meetings. But still, I'm struggling with how to give input that will not only inform you of my opinions, my thoughts, my responsibilities as a citizen, but also how to do good, how to add value. And so I, I missed the boat earlier. I should have asked for a correction on the minutes of June fifteenth, I believe is what it was. And basically, my comment is put down there that he urged, that he, me being me, urged the town to forget, not forget the issues at the current P, Public Works Facility. And I'm, I'm thinking I actually said that I'm was requesting that we evacuate the employees from the current Public Works Facility in that it is an unsafe workplace and move them up on a temporary basis to Burn Hill Park. Now, I don't see these comments. Basically, the input was earnest. And if we're going to record these comments and public comments, which is basically the only input that most citizens have and actually something that the boards are always requesting, if we're going to record them, we should record them correctly. Because this took a personal turn to me this year. Uh, it's hard for me to explain. But we've been talking about the unsafeness of this facility for thirteen or fourteen years. And what I'm worried about is, I think one of the uh, selectmen said that he would like regular updates on the status of the Public Works Facility current condition, and it's noted in this um, particular old business as not needing to be discussed. So I'm sitting here as a citizen and a little frustrated. I'm, I'm, I'm not that good at giving input that is how, you know, workable, so to speak. I don't know politics. I don't know how to address people. But what I'm worried about is the nature of the problem at the Public Works Facility is going to go along the same route that it's gone over the last thirteen years. We don't record input correctly. And I'm not pointing, I, I mean, it happens. But we're also not doing what a selectman asks to be done, which is the current update on the Public Works Facility as it exists today. I'm worried that as we go through the real hard work ahead of us of getting a new facility, that we're going to forget about the employees down uh, an old Colchester road. So I appreciate you letting me go uh, probably a lot more than three minutes here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you now and have a good night.
Thanks for your comment.
Thank you. Thank, appreciate it. Uh, Donna, any other comments? Public comments?
Looks like that's it for now.
Good. Hey, I'd like to, I, I, Dale Larson, I can make a quick comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, and it's, it's, it, it'll, a lot in re, in response to uh, your comments, Terry. Um, once that, and I have not seen how the surveys came out. Uh, so it's, it's, I, I have to preface my comments with that, that I have not yet seen the final result of the survey. Uh, but whatever those results are, uh, I do believe that we need to move forward at, with all haste uh, to go our next step. Um, we still have some pretty decent weather. Uh, so if things do need to get moved, uh, wha- whatever, whatever we need to do, we need to start working on it. Um, and, and hopefully the taxpayers are going to back us on whatever, you know, whatever it came out to be. Uh, it's got to get done. Uh, you are right. It's been thirteen, if not longer, years. This needs to come to a close and this needs to get handled before uh, we have an accident or worse down there, uh, just because of the work site conditions. Um, the employees have been incredible to work with. Uh, biding and giving us the time to try to do everything the right way. Um, but the time has come. We need to move forward with something. So, thank you. Thank you for your comments, Terry.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. Any other public comments? You know, see any, Donna, anything else that I can't see?
No, I, I don't see any here. So I think we're all set.
So based on that conclusion of the public comment section, I will move section thirteen, which is adjourned, and I will take the liberty of making a motion that we adjourn this meeting, Board of Selectmen, at seven forty-one PM. May I have a second?
A second?
Second.
To be clear, second, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending. Have a great night. Thank you.
Good night.
Peter, great job.